All right, good evening and welcome to the August 5th, 2025, meeting of the Hickory City Council. Councilman Freeman and Councilman Zagoroli are absent this evening. At this time, I would like to invite the Reverend Bain Imatha from Hartsville Memorial United Methodist Church, and also McQueen Chapel United Methodist Church in Conover to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here this evening, Pastor.
Thank you for being here. My name is Bain Imatha. I'm a pastor at Hartzell Memorial in Hickory and McQueen Chapel in Conover. It's a pleasure to be here to pray. Before I pray, I'd like to read Psalm 33, verse 12. It says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom he has chosen as his heritage." Let us pray. Gracious Lord and Creator of the universe, we are grateful to be in your presence this evening. We come as your people to bring this city, this nation, this community before you. You know all about this nation, about this community, and about these people you have chosen, Lord, to be our leaders. We bring them before your presence, Father, so we can fill them with your wisdom. We ask the Holy Spirit, Lord, in this place, to lead and to speak through those you have appointed, Lord, to lead, and to bring a word of wisdom, a word of knowledge, to this community. We think of those, Lord, who are marginalized in our community. We think of those, Lord, who have no word, who are speechless. We think of those, Lord, who cannot speak for their own, but you are, Lord, who speak for them. Let the people you have appointed in this evening, in this place, Lord, stand for them. We bring this place, oh Lord, as you have created it and you have entrusted it to your people who are here. Lord, we bring this environment to you. Keep it safe. Keep our air safe. Keep the water we drink safe. Keep our schools, our highway, our streets, Lord, safe. We bring these people make decisions for this community to you. Let them be inspired, oh Lord, by your wisdom and be the people you have called to guide and to lead your people. Glory for your mighty name, Lord, as we come, and in your presence within us. To you, oh Lord, who is above all, glorify your name in this council. In your name just Christ, who is our Lord, we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next item on the agenda will be persons requesting to be heard. We always allow time at the beginning of our council meeting for anyone who would like to address the council. We ask that you approach the podium and that you state your name and address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. We also, just for the record, let you know, this is a time for us to hear from you. It's not a time necessarily where we'll be responding, but we will, at some later date, get back with you if needed to be able to do that. So at this time, we have one person who's signed up. It's not necessary, of course, to sign up, but I'll always start with the folks who have signed up. But if you're here and you didn't get an opportunity to sign up, we will certainly allow you an opportunity to be able to address the council this evening. So first up is Mr. Bob Post. So, Mr. Post, if you would, approach the podium and, for the record, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Bob Post and I live at 1006 12th Ave. Northwest in Hickory. I have some pictures that I make copies of.
Okay.
Can I hand these out?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to talk about this evening is hanging utility lines. And specifically, not electrical lines, but cable, phone lines, hanging down onto the ground. I've provided some pictures of several instances of this. One of the most notable is on 8th Avenue Northeast, right near Moret Stadium. There are lines that come down off from the utility poles, run along the ground, go back up to the utility poles. There are lines also shown on the other side of the sheet, hanging down that are abandoned pots, telephone lines that are just hanging down. I think a lot of this occurred as a result of Helene. It's certainly been there for many, many months. And it's something that I'm asking for your support in getting fixed. I think it's, you know, the worst, it's hazardous if somebody messes around with these. I think at the very least, it doesn't look well for this. It doesn't show pride in the city. Beautiful stadiums right there, salt blocks right there, you know, the YMC, a lot of people walking around. And it just looks really poor. So asking for your help. What I'm not asking for is for you to get on the phone to Steve Miller. I want to give a shout out to Steve. Steve has been fantastic, just really very courteous, very helpful, you know, just really very responsive. And so I'm asking for, maybe there's things you can do. And so just some ideas, maybe get on the phone with the utility companies. I'd love to hear what the person on the other end of the line says when the mayor calls up and says, hey, this is the mayor, and I'd like to get something fixed.
They probably say, let's speak to Steve Miller.
Steve has a lot of clout, but just, you know, maybe a little more can be added to that. Maybe there's some legal things that maybe the utility company has some obligation to provide a safe and clean environment. You know, maybe it's just goodwill. Maybe it's, you know, also, you know, a lot of these lines have a lot of copper in them. I don't know if there's a financial aspect to this as far as recycling of that copper. Copper prices are pretty high, so. But, you know, just looking to bring some fresh ideas to this and see if you can't help get these things fixed. I think, you know, we're all proud of Hickory and I think this just looks a little like we've kind of let it down. I've been, my wife tells me sometimes I walk around the house and I go by things that should be picked up and taken care of. So I have a real soft spot for that, you know, where you don't always see things that need addressing. So really just asking for your help in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Post. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council this evening as well?
Hi, I'm Bruce Tretter. I live at 27 Second Street Northwest, right over Tasteful Beans. It's a big pitch for them. And I'm a resident, a business owner, and I'm also a member of a group called Bike Walk North Carolina. I'm a board member with them. And Bike Walk North Carolina, which all of you know about now, but not many of you probably know about us, is a statewide advocacy organization that helps to advocate for active transportation. And that means walking, running, biking, rolling, people who are handicapped. And of course, that means interacting with drivers. We're largely funded by the Governor Highway Safety Program, which stipulates that we do two things. We have a friendly driver program, which has been on fire this year, so working with high schools, with driving schools. And we also are mandated to have a transportation summit every year. This will be our 14th transportation summit. It's held in different places around the state. This year it's going to be in Hickory. And it's going to be, I don't quite have a G version, but it's going to be really good. So we've got, we're going to be talking about inspired spaces that happened right here in Hickory and how that initiated the downtown renovation. So it was about, okay, we lost business, now how do we return business, bring business back, and have quality of life that attracts people to the city of Hickory? So that funded the, or was the seed money to fund the Trivium Business Park and also our CityWalk network of multi-use trails and the renovation of downtown. So that's all been going. I mean, the multi-use trail is almost finished, that'll be done in a year and a half. But our summit will be featuring what goes on in Hickory and also what can be transferred to other towns and municipalities across the state. So I wanted to make people aware that that's going to happen here, September 7th through 9th, so it's a Sunday through Tuesday. And people in, certainly you're more than welcome to come. You can see our stuff online. If you want to contact me directly, it's my full name, Bruce Tretter, T-R-E-T-T-E-R, at gmail dot com. It's very easy. Contact me, reach out. And thanks very much for the time here, and I look forward to seeing you at our transportation summit this September. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone else present that would like to address the council this evening? All right, as always, you don't have to wait until a council meeting. All of our council members make themselves available and you can certainly contact them by several different means. Not any time, as long as it's, let's see, I think Tony goes to bed about nine, seven o'clock, nine o'clock. So, yeah, just remember that. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of our regular meeting of July the 15th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Send the second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Those minutes carry unanimously. Item number seven is our reaffirmation and ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. The reaffirmation and ratification carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of council or staff that would like to have any item removed from the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda, second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The consent agenda carries unanimously. We have one departmental hearing this evening, or report rather. So to introduce that, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, and the city council, Mr. Swanson. The one staff report tonight is the presentation of the 2025-2030 Fire Department Strategic Plan. It'll be presented by Fire Chief Matt Hutchinson.
Can you hear me okay, David?
Mayor, council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson, thank you so much. Allow me to come up here and give this presentation. Previously, we had a plan in place. It ended on December 31st, 2024. We began that revision process in the spring of this year for our new one. The previous one we had done in 2019 was facilitated by the Centers for Public Safety Excellence, the same ones that do accreditation. They actually came into town, sat down with us, and went through the whole process. This one, however, we still use them as a facilitator, but they monitored us and we could do it off of, online. So we did a lot of it in-house, so. So part of what we are doing here today is we're going to ask, and we need to ask and look outside and see what it is that the Fire Department does and why do we do it. The services we provide and the priorities. We created an online survey, and the thing about online surveys, and I'm sure you all are aware, we put it out with the snippets and we also did some through Facebook and Instagram. The responses were small typically, unfortunately, that's the way it happens. But the answers, the information we got were pretty good in the discussion we had when we went through the process. So that was the front end of what we were doing as far as getting some feedback about what does the community think we do and, you know, compared to what we know what we do, right? So here's some of the, these are some of the community feedback reviews. And this is just a chart. So basically, we asked, here's the nine things, the core things that the Fire Department, we know we do. What do you rank these at? And of course, obviously, with the Fire Department, everyone said, well, fire is our number one thing, right? So I can show you stats that we run far more medical calls than do fire, but the perception of what we do, ranking wise, all the way down to fire inspections and plan review, which is a big part of economic development, they had to be ranked some ways. So that doesn't mean one's lesser than the others, it's just perception of what the Fire Department does. So moving forward with that, we developed a team of internal stakeholders, and that was Fire Department employees. And we created a strategic plan workshop using the online information from that group. We had 22 employees. Every division was involved in process, so we didn't leave anyone out. We had someone from every division. We had inspectors, mechanics, we had admin staff, we had firefighters, right? And we had every rank, whether it was firefighter, firefighter, or up to a captain and chiefs. So the outcome was that, it was very well thought out. Everyone looked at the mission, and this is going to be our mission, what we came up with. And the reason we did this is because being an accredited agency, this is something we have to do as part of that. This is the front end of every accreditation process is having a strategic plan. And we have to do this every five years. So that's our new mission. It was a three-day process, so this was the first day. This probably took the first, this is the first half of the day, getting everybody to come to terms and make a decision because this is not what we originally had. This is a change from our previous one. This one's more concise and a little bit more pointed. So that was what the group came up with, collectively. So values. Once again, the second part of the process, this is on the second part of the day. Values should be embraced by all members. They are the features that make up the personality and culture of an organization. And these values that we came up with run in tandem with the B.C. core initiatives of being customer-focused, innovative, teamwork, and being your best, right? So we did keep our values from our previous strategic plan. Everybody reviewed them and thought they were good. So the first, and you'll see an acronym kind of come out of this, but forward thinking. And the intent of this is, you know, there's so many new technologies, and what can we do and look at to provide a better service? Is there something out there to make us better? And look at ways to broaden our training to be prepared for any new challenges that may arise. The second one is integrity. And integrity is obviously what it means. It's what we do, do we keep the integrity committee in place? Do we bridge any gaps in the community as far as outreach? Do we, does the community look at us the way we feel they do? And that is that we're here to provide a service and to be, and to give back. And also to bolster relationships, whether it's with other fire departments and other stakeholders. The second one is resilience. This is to focus more internally on our coworkers, an emphasis on staffing and succession planning, making sure we're looking forward and making sure that we can keep people in place. And then find, also find ways to improve health and wellness of our members because a healthy workforce is better for our community. And as we go through, you'll start seeing these themes keep reoccurring. And the last is excellence through service, and this is a, this is typical of Centers for Public Safety and Excellence. This is one of their, what they strive for us to be. So every year, we do an annual compliance report and say that what we say we're doing, that we're actually doing. So they always monitor us in that way. And some of the next things are a lot of things, you know, you've seen SWAT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. There's different ways of naming this. I'll hit some of the strengths that came out from both the external community survey and then from our people doing internally. A strength was the training division in our facilities, and I referenced the burn building at CBCC that we collaborated with. The community and city coworker relationships we have internally and externally, some great strengths. Our apparatus and our equipment, capital purchases are fantastic. Some weaknesses maybe that they foresaw would be station location due to growth. Our growth is expanding, it's positive, but also can we still reach everyone? And then communication, which was more of an internal little soundbite that guys, they were talking about, are we getting all the information out to them? An opportunity was training. There's always room for training. Economic development, which we know is there, and community involvement, which we've started more, reaching out some more. And once again, you'll start seeing these layer into the rest of the strategic plan. Some possible threats is the fire service as a whole, as PD dealt with some 10 years ago, is everyone is vying for every other employee. So that's kind of a threat that we're seeing, and we've actually, it's gotten a lot better. We just hired on seven and we have 13 in the fire academy, so that's a great thing. So we're improving, just like the PD, it took a long time, we're getting there. And then also the economic future. What does it look like for us as a whole, for the town? So taking all these ideas, and there was hundreds, just what I did is condensed down some of the common themes for core. So some of the critical issues and those things I just explained, we broke our team into three groups. So those 22 people got in three groups and they started pulling that data in and saying, what are the same and where can we align these? In other words, to get an initiative of what it is we need to look at. So in the end, the, all these ideas from internal, external, came down to six initiatives. And you'll start, you'll see every one of these as a theme for our goals moving forward. So I'll let you read those, but you'll see where all this weaves in as we start to move into the goals. So the first goal, the intent is to evaluate our current outreach with media outlets and look for ways to improve how we get our message out of what we do. We've already completed a collaboration with Dana's team in communication. It was a really great video that we haven't even put out yet, but soon we will, thanks to them. We'll continue to look outside the box to get our message out to more constituents. We've not used social media as much to our advantage, just because of the timeliness of using some of those tools. By the time that information's out, it could be a little late. So we're trying to figure out how to make that part of the message work for us. There's quite a few more. And I'll say on the front side of this, the whole strategic plan will be on the webpage in a couple weeks after we go through some more cleaning up of some of the marketing stuff. There's goal number two. So in other words, we're looking at future response area growth and service needs. And once again, we're going to look at our internal, working with city planning and also our Fire and Life Safety Division. Where's the growth? Are we doing everything we can to make sure the growth adheres to codes and that it keeps the community safe and keeps our firefighters safe? We're going to strengthen multi-agency response relationships locally and regionally. We're working with, creating a rescue task force with the county, but we're going to be really focused on working with law enforcement, our own Hickory police, on that rescue task force. That's another collaboration we're working on. And that's part of the all-hazards approach. Continue looking at training for all hazards operation and professional development. I talked about succession planning, so making sure everyone has all the training they need to make sure that when myself or anyone else leaves, that there's people there to backfill and they all have the training they need. Ensure that we maintain a minimum training requirement that meets our nine core services. Those were the nine that I showed you at the beginning. So whether you're in fire and life safety or whether you're in hazmat, that you get all the training you need to satisfy the state requirements. Make necessary changes to enhance policies and procedures to guide these initiatives. So in other words, instead of just saying it, make sure there's policy or a procedure in place that aligns and make sure we get these things done, especially if they're required annually. This one is going to align with, going once again, to annual policies and procedures. We do this every year, but this is definitely doing a more focus on staff positions. As we grow, we may have to adjust what people do and whatever rank that is, and make those adjustments. Not necessarily adding people, but changing roles and responsibilities. Continue to encourage coworker involvement by use of committees. We rely on committees a lot. It's a collective voice for maintaining teamwork and organizational success. We use them for our apparatus, we use them for our turnout gear, we use them for the equipment we use. We ask for the people that are actually, that put their hands on it. Tell us what you think's going to be the best for you and for the community. And we're going to continue to ensure that capital expenditures, which have been fantastic, still align with those future needs. So when they say this is what we needed to buy, does it align with the city's capital? And is it fiscally responsible? And this is always, this is an ongoing goal, and we had this the last time. This is just to make sure we have staffing aligned, quality applicants through extended outreach programs. We've been going to the schools, whether it's middle schools and high schools and college. It's been great, it's a great benefit. We're a little bit different in the age requirements, but we still are able to integrate some of that in for new hires, so it's been good. Review staffing needs in all divisions in anticipation of retirements to ensure, once again, succession. Utilize, we're going to utilize city programs, like the Human Resources just implemented a new NeoGov onboarding initiative. And I feel that's going to be a huge benefit as far as the early part of retention and showing our coworkers, hey, we're glad you're here, we want you here, it's going to be a great, I think that's going to be a great initiative. We're one of the first one, well, I think everyone's going to do it, but we've all been involved in that process. And then, of course, always trying to be competitive with other fire departments. And this is our last goal. Health and wellness, which is critical in the fire service, whether it's cancer prevention or other things, but continue to create a health and wellness committee that reviews procedures, policies, and equipment to focus on maintaining a healthy lifestyle. We're going to look at fire-specific tools and equipment that will create a safer working environment and collaborate with other city departments when developing wellness initiatives. And that would mean Human Resources, our health risk assessment, to make sure they tie us in. When we do our physicals, do they align with the cities? So that's all of our goals. That's our strategic plan, and it's going to be a five-year process. Every one of those goals will be assigned to someone as a lead. It's probably going to be, it could be a battalion chief or a captain. And as they go through the next five years, some could take less time than that, we'll keep reviewing those at least biannually. So moving forward, the success of this plan will not just be from the goals and objectives, but also for the continued support of you, the council, our coworkers, and the community. We continue to measure our performance so that we are held to task. And the strategic plan should be dynamic, as they all should be, and it should not be a binder sitting on a shelf collecting dust. So that'll be up to me to make sure it doesn't. So I will be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Chief Hutchinson?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
So number one, thank you to you and the entire department. I'm constantly impressed with how you keep the city current, whether it's technology, equipment, things like that, and probably more than current, probably ahead of the curve a little bit. And so thank you for that. And I've had the privilege of seeing your department in action. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I have. And you mentioned several times training. And something that has stood out to me when I have seen them is you can tell that they are well-trained because they execute, you know, technically and in a stressful environment, but they remain customer service focused. And that might not sound like a lot, but that's a lot. To be able to execute and keep that focus like that is impressive. And the last thing I'll say, you mentioned, you know, the funding of the department. A lot of that comes with the trust that, and I'll speak on behalf of everybody, you know, you've earned a lot of trust and we trust you and the department to make reasonable requests and it's for the betterment of the community. So I just want to say thank you to you and the entire department for everything you do.
No, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Tony, that was very well said, and he does speak, I think I can allude to the fact that he does speak for the entire council. We do appreciate the job that each and every one of your personnel do each and every day. And it's exciting for me to see, and I'm sure it is for you, to see these new folks come on because they definitely have a different perspective, probably a newer and better perspective than what most people do of what the fire service does in reality compared to what the perception is of the community. So it's really exciting for me to see those folks come on. And I guess all of the folks that come on now are younger than what I am. So it's, everybody we see, whether it be in the police department or the public services department, I see people and I say, do you mean they're old enough to be working here and driving a fire truck or a police car or a garbage truck or something like that? And I'm like, wow. So we greatly appreciate the job that your staff does, the coworkers, and we look forward to seeing the results of the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say it's not without all the teamwork of every other department. department, police, public utilities, the water department, public services, I mean, everybody, every day we interact, and it's, it's a great team. So, thanks again. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. I don't believe we have anything else. No, we don't have any information lines. Okay. We have appointments to boards and commissions, so I'll open it up to any of our council members to make appointments to our boards and commissions this evening.
I'd like to nominate Leah Bott to the University City Commission.
Okay. Leah.
I'd like to appoint Beth Barry to the Regional Planning Commission.
All right. And I would like to nominate Mr. Vince Bartlotme, Bartlotme. He's actually here this evening. So, it's rare that, that someone actually shows up to a council meeting when they're getting nominated, but he was engaged enough this evening, and I met him a while ago, and he's actually Councilman Freeman's appointment, but Councilman Freeman wasn't able to be here this evening, so he asked me if I would nominate Mr. Bartlotme. And so, I'm proud to be able to do that. We appreciate you being here this evening, sir. So, I'll make that nomination on Councilman Freeman's behalf. Are there any others? All right. I'll make a motion that we approve those nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right. That carries unanimously as well. All right. Any matters not on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any general comments from council?
I know everyone already knows it, but our FC is the champions, so after two years, that's pretty remarkable. It's very, it's very exciting.
It was very, very exciting. Not only are they the national champions, and we'll have further on this, we have, I know we've been asked about a celebration, and I've talked to the owners of the team. It turns out that some of the players had to leave straight from San Francisco, and then the players that came back here on Saturday, they, they've already left to go back to their respective schools as well. So, it's getting, I'm leaving it up to the ownership at Hickory FC, and they're, they're looking at exploring some of the options of having some kind of recognition or future celebration. So, stay tuned for that. But not only are they the national champions, but Carlos Rubio was named Coach of the Year, and also National Player of the Year was Antonio Panetta. So, they're national champs, and their coach and their players are also recognized, and will have further developments as, as, as they get those to us. So, we are very, very proud of them. As you know, they went and defeated the, the national champions. The team that they defeated hadn't been scored upon, they, they had only scored three goals against them the entire season, and we scored three goals against them in one game. So, that just tells you the caliber and the quality of players that we had on the team here. So, there'll be more to come regarding that. All right? Anything else?
I like Mr. Post's idea about turning over responsibility to the mayor, hounding utility companies to get, to get, I think that's a great idea.
We're not going to vote on that.
We can take that off Steve Miller's plate.
Yeah, we're, we're not voting.
We direct all calls to Mayor Gess on them.
I, I think I'm already getting them. Yeah, I think I'm already getting them.
No, we appreciate it.
All right, let's move, let's, let's move right along. All right. I'm going to make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss or to approve the minutes from our June 17th closed session, and also to discuss some economic, potential economic development concerns. All right? We will return, if there's any action to be taken, we'll return after our closed session.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get a second. Okay. We have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll be in closed session. Thank you for being here this evening.